Try to remember.
Is it what?
Is it for the country?
Yeah.
That's all I have to say. So if I'm ever quieted, it's not because I don't have time.
To weigh your own little world, right? Do you what you're doing better here is better for the country. Right, so. That's how I would take it.
It is.
I have no skin in that.
And so I think I'm just trying to say is that I will try to make some statements.
But if people make cogent arguments about politics, I'll pull, I'll, I'll take with the best.
My time also. I'm just gonna study for a while.
You what?
Must study for a while. See bad, oh sweet Jesus.
Jump right in.
You know, I've been known to be a, I was like cliff diving in Croatia.
Oh yeah?
Yeah, my husband said, "You should probably see that there's like an exit option before you jump in." Because I didn't know I had a cliff around. I had to lift up and I had to crawl up the cliff to get back up to the top. You know what he did? He jumped off the cliff with me because he knew I could stop. And he goes, "And this is how you're gonna do it, girl. Keep going."
It's all on you.
I think he had that thought and then he's like, "You should gotta get stuck." Girls who get stuck, get worked through.
Agreed.
All these people here for the burger bar?
No.
No, uh, that is not what I think it is.
If you had been asked, we start to meet.
Where?
It's exciting. Looks like there's some outreach right here. How are you doing?
A taste. Do you like, what's that? Whimpy on pop?
Whimpy, it was whimpy. I'll gladly meet you Tuesday for a burger. Well, I had not even heard of it.
We need to start the meeting. I just can't stop.
I like the flavor, but I, yeah, I could use those.
So I still, I still look around for to bring a pen this time. I forgot my pen again.
We got extras down here.
So wee, can I borrow?
Yeah, I don't, check that it works.
Thank you.
Oh, he's gonna give me the one with no.
I got it, I got it. Thank you. That's awesome. I brought my computer.
Do you have an extra, did you bring extras to share? Oh, okay.
No, but I had some sweet pictures. Yeah, I've been, I've been, uh...
I guess we're getting started.
Uh, the Badgers. I've been chasing the Badgers.
Well, welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall and we are going to start with the public hearing part here. Item number one, it's, uh, the PBB Middleton LLC Point Burger Bar is requesting a Class B fermented beverage and Class B intoxicating liquor license located at 2259 Damming Way, Milton, Wisconsin. So anybody here who wants to speak for or against this item, please come to that microphone and, uh, you have three minutes. Anybody who wants to speak, well, so if they say, "I'm going to close this part of the public hearing," and then we go to the part comments from the city agent present, and it's limited to three minutes per speaker. And, uh... Greg Neeson would like to speak.
So I'm Greg Neeson and I own, uh, the property just east of the Addison project. And I own Green Neeson Insurance. First of all, I'm wondering why the city planners and council members would approve a project that will be a financial boon for the investors at the expense of many others. The majority of the area residents are not in favor of a four-story building and even a three-story building will seem overwhelming on this lot. Three small residential lots are being considered for thirty-nine units and it's referred as a multi-family, but only four units are two-bedroom. Visitor parking seems insufficient as only five stalls are planned, sending motors to street parking and area private parking lots. The building setback is less than nine feet, which is, uh, very unfair. What sort of privacy will the homeowners on Franklin Avenue have if this building is approved? Will families want to sit, play, and barbecue in their own backyards? With twenty residents looking down on them, few homeowners would welcome this situation nor feel comfortable in their own backyard. A two-story would seem like it would give a more residential feel for the adjacent properties. A three- or four-story building is bound to have a negative impact on property values of many nearby homeowners. There are no four-story buildings on University Avenue between Allen Boulevard and Parmaner Street. There's a one-story apartment complex located just west on University Avenue. Will that be the next location for a four-story building? I cannot foresee a future buyer of my building being sandwiched in between an existing two-and-a-half-story building and then a four-story building. The developer indicated that this project will eliminate two blighted lots, although it will probably create a new blighted lot, which would be mine. The, the, the developer should have other options that might be better for the surrounding establishment, established property owners. And as a lifelong Middleton taxpayer, I would hope that the city council would show concern for my property value and that of others. Uh, question, if someone intentionally caused twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, or a hundred thousand dollars or more in property damage to a neighbor's property, that person would probably be jailed. But it's okay for the city of Middleton to do that to my property or to others in the Franklin Avenue and Coolidge Court area. At the May fifth informal meeting regarding the Addison project, an alderperson said that there was little opposition to this four-story building. I want to set the record straight, as there were plenty of people that are opposed to the Addison project. And it was unfair that Mr. Gray and his associates were allowed to speak at length at this planning meeting and no resident opposing the project was heard. Today, today we just looked at a, uh, my wife and I looked at a newly constructed two-story, twenty-unit apartment building with underground parking and the cost was under two-and-a-half million dollars, which comes to less than a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per unit. So I think the Osterger Capital Group is just looking to maximize their profit with a four-story building. I would like to see the building reversed. And it seems like the, the council wishes to keep the cottage rather than a longtime Middleton business of thirty-one years. There are several reasons, again, in summary, why this building should not be built. It's too large for the area and the location. There's other available land in Middleton where this project would fit nicely. It infringes on the privacy of others. It will lower property values, especially my, my business location. And traffic concerns, parking concerns, shadowing. And the trees will not block the view of the building all year long, only for about four to six months. The council needs to do the right thing and listen to the residents affected by this project and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. So the next one is Sarah Cordes.
I first, uh, need to ask, I'm not sure procedurally how it works. Last night I had a knock on my door and a neighbor from down the street said, "Sarah, I really want to go talk, but I'm getting my husband home from the hospital tomorrow." Uh, she gave me a statement authorizing me to read it. She has signed it. Can I beg your indulgence to read this as outside of my three minutes?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I Sheila Mandarino reside at 6918 Franklin Avenue and will be unable to attend the May fifteenth, twenty-eighteen common council meeting. I have asked Sarah Cordes to be my voice. It appears that the plan commission and council are listening to our concerns regarding the Addison apartment building. However, I do not feel they are understanding the impact it will have to the Franklin Avenue neighborhood now and in the future. I know that change is imminent and here are my concerns. After looking at the layout and pictures of the Addison project, a four-floor apartment building appears too large for the space it will be occupied. Thus concessions are being made to set back the building and rezone the lots. The height of the building eliminates the privacy of the residents' backyards. If one wants an idea of how this apartment project may look, you need only to drive to Cross Plains and view Esser Place and Xander Place Apartments as they are located at Main Street Highway fourteen and are built extremely close to the road, similar to the proposed. It also concerns me that the council did not have the foresight to notify the affected residents of this proposed building for feedback. The amount of additional traffic as a result of the project and redirecting the traffic to a residential street doesn't solve the problem, it just relocates the problem. Traffic flows above the speed limit on Franklin Avenue and my concerns are residents exiting their driveways and the safety of elementary school children as they walk to and from Sock Trail School. We have been told this is affordable housing, yet eleven-hundred, thirteen-hundred, and eighteen-hundred for studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom seem excessive. It concerns me that these types of buildings are being concerned along, uh, considered along University Avenue from the Beltline to Madison. It is not an ideal look for the good neighbor city. Although the design of the building is aesthetically pleasing, it's hard to imagine multiple apartment buildings lining University Avenue. By way of the above statements, I am also signing my name to the petition. Sheila Mandarino, May fourteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, speaking for myself, my name is Sarah Cordes. I'm at 6714 Franklin Avenue. I want to speak about two things in this process. First, the process as we have seen it and perceived it as residents. And second, the project specifically itself. And just a few numbers, because I think actual numbers and proof have been very thin on the ground throughout this process. We've already discussed the notification of one hundred to two hundred feet. To your council's credit, I think you have addressed that this is something that needs to be spoken to in the future and I thank you for that. Um, perhaps a notification of three thousand feet for all PDZ zoning that is already in the, uh, ordinances for large retail might be more, PDD zoning is just so all-encompassing that that might hit the bill better. Just to cover some of the greatest hits of the process, um, the May one council meeting, we do want to thank you for sending this back to the plan commission. As the neighbors surrounding, we were very excited that, that went back with the mandate to consider this as a three-floor building, um, rather than a four-building. Uh, we were also promised a neighborhood informational meeting where we thought, since it was happening before the plan commission, we would actually have some input. And that happened on May fifth. As for that meeting, the neighborhood meeting, twenty-three to twenty-five residents by my count showed up on a beautiful, and alders as well, and, and other people, so thank you for that, the mayor too. Um, twenty-three to twenty-five people showed up on a beautiful Saturday morning. We came in good faith, thinking our concerns were going to be heard and perhaps even addressed, uh, maybe with some numbers. And what we heard maybe, uh, was mostly from the developer that continuing that a three-story building, fewer units are simply not financially feasible in this area. And, and that's fine. But we were a little bit surprised, seeing as that was May fifth. We were sad that there was a letter to the city from the developer dated May fourth that this was simply too late to require any, any redesign of the project and that it would cost a lot of money. So as a neighborhood, we did not leave the meeting feeling heard, feeling satisfied, feeling compromised with in any way because we felt like it was a foregone conclusion. Uh, the May eighth plan commission meeting, although I'm very glad that it went back there, um, I can replay that for anybody who wasn't here. The developer, his architect, came up and said, "It's not financially feasible, building costs are high, to go any, uh, lower than three feet." It was like a Jedi mind trick and I just have that on my mind because my boys are into Star Wars right now. They said, "We can't do it," and the plan commission said, "Okay, you can't do it. It's not financially feasible. No numbers were discussed." Boom, back to common council. And again, the public, I understand it was not a public hearing. Two alders stood up and said, "I think the neighborhood felt heard." And there was a row of people in the back, it was like a comedy movie of some kind going, "Not heard, not happy." It's just the way it was. Uh, speaking of your plan commission, I know you're very proud of your urban planning expert on the planning commission. As well you should be. The gentleman I speak of is an associate professor in urban planning at the university sixty-five percent time. He also has a consulting business. And to his credit, I think he believes in urban infill and density and projects like this. But to sit and, um, pass projects like this, one after the other, stagecoach thrists, that is his bread and butter. He, his area of expertise is urban infill. And to have him doing that on a suburban plan commission smacks a, a little bit to me of a conflict. We didn't even get the common courtesy of the setback of the building on the residential side. The plan commission said, "Okay, set it back a little bit on the University Avenue side so it looks like a three-story building." Why that matters on the urban corridor of University Avenue, we're not quite sure. On back on Franklin Avenue, the residential community, boom, you're still gonna be looking at four. We didn't even get to ask anyone if you could do the setback on the front, although that would probably shade Green Neeson even more, I don't know. Do you have a?
You've got to wrap up, so.
Oh, I've got to wrap up, okay. Nearly one hundred percent of my neighbors came to this from the very start of the process, as soon as we knew about it and said, "We support the development, we know development has to happen. Please just work with us." Forty-one percent of people in my school, Sock Trail, we take reduced and free lunches. If you want to talk about workforce housing, you are making seven to eight units in this thirty-nine unit building that are workforce housing. When we live in the school that needs it, this neighborhood is your workforce housing. I don't know how degrading the already existing housing stock and hurting the workforce people for seven to eight units.
Thank you, Sarah.
I don't know how that's a winner. Thank, thank you.
And next speaker is Sarah Wood. That will be followed by Nile Oster, Osterlso.
Hi, I'm Sarah Wood. I live at 6924 Franklin Avenue. Um, and I know people have spoken to this before, but I just want to, as another community member, come out and say, um, that Franklin Avenue is a really special community. It's not just another road through which traffic can be diverted. Our children walk to school, they walk to each other's houses, we've grown up together. Um, and I feel like the impact of this, um, regardless of the traffic, um, statement, because you didn't study Franklin Avenue, um, would certainly impact, um, the, the feeling of our community. Um, and I think that before we adjust the height regulations, we have to sort of consider the difference in height as Sarah has said, that four, four stories on, on overlooking Franklin Avenue would be really significant. Um, and while of course I support development along the University Avenue corridor, I think that's important to give a cohesive feel to the city. I've looked at the design-build-plan. Um, I'm just hesitant to adjust our regulations, um, so quickly into this process when it's, um, when it's just now sort of getting going, especially when it would impact one of the most established neighborhoods in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Nile is the next one.
I can take him.
And she will be followed by Jesse Mace.
Uh, my name is Nile Osterlso. I live at twenty-twenty-three Park Lawn Place, uh, Middleton. And, um, I'm, uh, uh, I don't have a very good timer here, so if you give me a warning notice or something like that, that, that will be appreciated. Oh, you got the timer there?
Yeah, we've got the timer, so.
Yeah, I, I've got, uh, about, uh, I've got six points here. And I'm not gonna kind of dwell on some of these, uh, too, too much because some of them are already made, but the four-story, uh, building is too high. It's, um, it's been said that this conforms to this higher-density objective that the plan calls for, but you can meet the higher-density objective by a two-story building as well, you know? I mean, it's gonna be a little higher density than what's there already. Um, the setback, uh, from the university is woefully inadequate. It, it, uh, the university's gonna be widened someday and, uh, this is relevant to a building that's gonna be there for twenty or thirty years or longer, hopefully. And so I, I don't, I don't think that's in the plan, okay? Uh, provide, um, it doesn't provide adequate, uh, shopping. They, they're proposing some shopping mall or, uh, small shops at the lower level. Uh, there isn't enough room to park, there isn't enough access. Uh, and I, I think that's a, a considerable distraction. Uh, we don't want, uh, economic blight in our communities because people can't get into a business and see it go, go, uh, up for sale or out of business. Um, the traffic analysis plan is, um, inadequate. I, I, I don't want to, uh, sound like I'm criticizing the people that have done some of this work, like the planners and the engineer that did the traffic, uh, plan. But, but essentially, they're, they're not looking out for the greater public good and, uh, they're, uh, rendering opinions that are more self-serving to the, uh, developers than to the, uh, common good, the community's common good. So, um, um, the, 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 the traffic analysis is poor, okay? It could be better. The residential properties, uh, values are gonna rise. There's some dispute about what's, what that's gonna do, but basically, um, it's gonna put stress on the homeowners that are there, that are gonna see their property values go up and their taxes go up and, uh, their budgets thrown out of whack. Uh, what we need here is, uh, a neighborhood impact statement, okay? To look at the impact of the whole neighborhood and all the people involved. Um, and I, I want to use this corrupt development at Sequoia Library at Madison as an example of, um... I got two seconds or whatever it is, but, uh, anyhow, um, the corrupt, uh, development at Sequoia Library is held up as a roaring success. Well, I was over there just the other day and I suggest everybody go over there. There are a bunch of shops on the lower level that are up for sale or vacant. You can't get in there hardly to park to use the library. And, uh, whether the planners think that's a great idea, I think it's a bad idea. And if they would survey the people that use the place, they would find out that they're not really happy with most of the development. Thank you.
Thank you, Nile.
I, I have this, uh, written down, these points, and I'll submit them to you. Thank you.
So the next one is Jesse Mace. And she be followed by Kyle Robb.
I'm gonna try to be brave because I hate public speaking. This is so far, I've always registered without speaking. Okay, so I have true concerns about Middleton's desire to just fill in an area they consider blighted with little to no concern for how the development will look in the established neighborhood or how the neighbors that have to live near these developments feel. It honestly feels as though we all stated many varying concerns with this project. Coming from the building height, the overall density, the impact to the property values, mostly to the single-story homes to the rear and the business property to the east of the site, as Greg mentioned earlier. Privacy in our own yards, emergency vehicle access, and traffic, to name a few. Yet the city is only, seems to focus on the matter of the traffic, to which they share, "The TIA study shows it will have a negligible impact on our side streets." Sadly, the side streets are not included in the study and our true concern is if this project goes through, is the city will continue this trend. And as someone else stated, eventually Franklin and Elm would risk feeling more like frontage roads than quiet residential streets. Sadly to those of us in this neighborhood, it feels like the city is more in favor of increased tax revenue and the filling of two long empty lots versus trying to build something that better fits the feel of this neighborhood. We all agree we would like to see something go in this space. It does need something. We also are not opposed to seeing new families come to our area and enjoy what has drawn us to this area. You keep saying workforce and families is the goal. First off, families are not after studios or one-bedroom units. Plus, if they are in need of any additional state assistance, they are required to have separate bedrooms for their children. Many workforce people looking for affordable housing have families, yet your workforce friendly units are studios. Seems like someone has the advantage here and it's not the working families. Through this has provided me with the opportunity to meet many of my neighbors who share a similar vision of our neighborhood. We all just truly want to be able to come home at the end of the day and enjoy our privacy in our quiet neighborhood. I have met many with history to the area, several of us purchasing our homes from our grandparents or parents who also had a vision years ago. Having a giant apartment building in your backyard removes your sense of privacy while you're in your own backyard. Apartments generally have frequent turnover, so it will constantly be somebody new in your backyard. I know, as I have a two-story apartment building overhanging my property. We try to block it out, the view as nearly as possible. And I can attest that my grandparents had the opportunity to buy that land many, many years ago for a fraction of what you would buy land for today. It was too much money back then. Um, I'm willing to bet most of you all live in residential neighborhoods with a backyard neighbor and never risk having to deal with this sort of loss of privacy. I think I speak for several of us who left the last council meeting feeling like we had a chance to work with the city and developer to make this project work with our neighborhood. It was set to have a neighborhood meeting on Saturday, as Sarah stated. It was well-retended. In the end, I'm not even gonna repeat Sarah's comments because we all pretty much are in the same, same agreeance to how we felt feeling that meeting. Um, so it is our request that you please keep the zoning that is currently set for this property. The zoning allows for a building large enough to be a multi-family complex and better fit in with the feel of Middleton. In the end, all we want to see is a reduction of building size that better fits a very well-established area. We know change is coming. I have been here my whole life and Middleton has changed many times and I know it will continue to change. But let's stop trying to compete with bigger cities like Madison. There is nothing wrong with retaining the feel of Middleton as a smaller suburban city. That was the end of mine. Sarah ran out of time. Just a note, on Thursday, we started us an online petition. We did not do anything going door-to-door. Just in that short amount of time since Thursday, we've gotten eighty-three signatures and some wonderful comments. Since we're limited to three minutes, nobody's able to read those comments.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you. Kyle Robb.
Hello. Hi, my name's Kyle Robb and I live at seven-one-zero-two Franklin Avenue. I've been a resident for ten years and I've never been to a planning commission meeting, never been to a common council meeting. And, um, I'm really tight with my neighbors. We have a great area. I live on Franklin Avenue. It's a great culture and it's been brought to my attention. I thought I would just say, you know, give you my opinion on the project that's being, um, proposed. Uh, anyway, the, the main two issues I have, and everyone's already stated their issues as well and it's similar to what they have, but number one, the building height. I mean, I can see, I, I can see where you're going with this whole thing and, and it makes sense. I think it makes more sense if it was more downtown and you do a gradual progression. Maybe you do something in the next ten to fifteen to twenty years and have it make sense. But to have a four-story building surrounded by a bunch of two-story, two-story, some two-story apartments, some commercial, maybe some other mixed-use, it just doesn't, just doesn't fit the mold for the area. It just doesn't really make sense. Maybe it would in like twenty or thirty years when the area builds itself up a little bit. So that's the number one issue, just doesn't have a good feel and it's, it's just gonna be awkward to anyone in the, uh, living in the entire area. Uh, number two, and I'm not, I didn't get too familiar with this because I've just been introduced to it, but I know there's been a traffic impact analysis which has been done. Um, I shared with you, um, I emailed the mayor and, and Joanna and Ariel how I feel it's gonna affect the Franklin Avenue, um, corridor. I think the traffic impact analysis should absolutely not only cover Franklin Avenue but the other surrounding streets to see how that's gonna affect the area. Uh, my daughter goes to Sock Trail and I know what that's like in the morning. That's why I walk her to school because that intersection near Sock Trail is very busy. And even if you add a few cars, um, more, and as you do more development, people that are gonna leave that development are gonna take a right out and they'll take it, their next nap, the, the path of least resistance, which is take a right out onto Park, take another right on the Franklin and go all the way down to Sock Trail where you've got all those kids in the morning. So if you're just gonna add more issues to that, that, that's an issue. It's a separate issue that needs to be addressed, but that's gonna, that's the biggest issue I see as you add more development and also these higher-dense communities. So I would recommend that you stick with your guns. You, you stick with, uh, you know, your three-story, uh, make it less dense and then also extend the traffic impact analysis to include Franklin Avenue and the other surrounding streets. Thank you.
Next one is Trevor Chilson.
I'm Trevor Chilson, six-six-four-nine Franklin Avenue. I have the same concerns as my other neighbors. The height of the building doesn't fit what's there. Once we go to four stories, you can't take it back. Once we go to four stories, you can't take it back. That's just kind of the norm. Our project isn't set up for that now, or our guidelines. I know there's a new one in the making, but it's not out yet. I don't fully understand why we're rushing, but I guess that's for somebody else to decide. Our traffic will be impacted. It's been stated before, it's not in the, the study that was done, but it will impact us. It is a major walking street for elementary school kids. I see it every morning. It just doesn't, doesn't fit our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, the next one is Lee Schwartz. I don't know whether he wants to speak.
Yeah, my name is Lee Schwartz, and I've been in front of you before as a member of the Sustainability Committee. Urban infill is hard. It's hard. I think of urban infill generally, and I think of it as something that's really good for cities. I know that it's not always easy for the local neighbors, and I'm not a local neighbor, so I come at this from a different perspective. But I look at a site like this, and I think to myself, now, this is on University Avenue. This is one of the main thoroughfares into our city, and this is the type of development that I think our city needs right now. I hear that four stories is bad. I think about if we wait five or ten years, five stories is bad. Six stories is worse. What does this site look like if this doesn't get developed now? This, to me, is the right development at the right time. I think about what would happen to this site if this project doesn't move forward. This is something that sits there for a while and is a real negative on our community. And this is something that if, in five years, ten years, eventually another developer comes in without the same morals or ethics of our current developer that's proposing this, what does this, what does this look like to our community? I think we have an opportunity right now to do the right type of project, and I know, again, I think this is, it's, it's easy for me because this isn't right in my backyard. But I do think of this from a community perspective, and this is the kind of thing that Middleton needs. We need, we do need the housing, and this is the right place for it. If this were in the middle of, middle of a community, it'd be one thing, and I, forgive me for saying that because I know that it does feel that way to the people on Franklin Avenue, but this is a project that's right on University Avenue, and this is something that's important for us. So, I would very much urge the council to go ahead and approve this project. It's something that the Plan Commission, I know, has put a lot of thought into and feel strongly about, and so I'm here to speak in full support of, of the, of the project. Thanks.
Thank you, Lee. So, the next one is Nancy Neeson. She posed the project, but is not speaking. And then there's Craig Burfield. I don't know whether you want to speak or...
Yeah. Hi, my name is Craig Burfield, and I reside at 6709 Franklin Avenue, where I've lived for the last ten years. I have two children who go to Sock Trail Elementary and one who goes to Cromery Middle School. My wife is PTO president at Sock Trail and has spent time volunteering at Middleton Outreach Ministry. And I volunteered through the Middleton Senior Center for seven years, shoveling snow for an elderly, low-income couple down the block from me until they both passed away last spring. My very modest starter home is becoming my forever home as prices, as house prices continue to skyrocket in Middleton, creeping slowly out of reach. My neighbors are some of my best friends, and our kids play together and walk and ride bikes back and forth around the neighborhood to play. The reason why I mention this is so that you can see my involvement and commitment to this neighborhood. So, the question as stated in the agenda packet tonight is, is this an appropriate development for this site? I would answer no. First, all the obvious reasons. The site is located in the center of the block on University Avenue with a median blocking traffic from turning left out of the development and getting in the way of an already busy outlet from the Willie Street parking lot. This will force traffic wanting to head towards downtown Madison through a residential neighborhood, which is a major corridor for children walking to Sock Trail Elementary, Cromery Middle School, and the high school. The Plan Commission approved a plan without a traffic study, which, as I understand, it won't even address the traffic routed into the neighborhood. The city got a grant from the Dane County Better Urban Infill Development Program, and the Plan Commission did not follow the recommendation to limit the maximum height to three stories. But what I find most appalling is the fact that we're calling this workforce housing. On September fifteenth, 2015, the Common Council adopted a plan by the Workforce Housing Task Force to, I quote, "encourage compact development and a mixed income and diverse community where people who work in Middleton are able to afford to live in Middleton." The City of Middleton even has a warming video on their website saying they support this, but according to the calculations in the plan, the family in the video on the city's website won't be able to afford to live in this development unless they live in a one-bedroom. So, please, Common Council, ask the questions. Are my numbers right? Did I do the calculations correctly? Why does the city want to support the Ostringer Capital Group LLC, who are in it to make a buck, as opposed to longtime middle-class residents? Why are we not following our own build plan? And why are we approving things without doing the homework first? Thank you.
So, there's a note from Pat Leety. She lives on 1519 Milton Street. And summaries, please do not move forward with this building project. It is way too large, and thank you. There are some more details here. Anybody else wants to speak?
I got here a little late. There's a name correction.
Okay.
I wasn't sure what the name of the agenda item is, so I did fall apart.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Weitzman. I live at 7214 Maywood Avenue, which is pretty close to where this is, and I walk through this area a lot, and I oppose this change. I'm not sure of anything else I want to add, but I did want to put in my two cents' worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Now, there's a Terry Turner. He didn't wish to speak, but he is objecting to the process which the mayor has used in making the appointment to the, in committee. Anyone else want to speak?
I would just like to add a comment to what I, I was just...
Yeah, please go to the microphone, but this is, it should be a quick comment, so, since you already spoke.
Let me get quick. Niall Lawson's over here again, and my, my quick comment is that I, I don't live right there like the people on Franklin, so I wanted to make it clear that my, my comments are more in general, from the standpoint of the city in general. And, and I, I want to make that point clear because of some comments I heard from Lee Schwartz, that this is good for the whole community. I don't think it's good for the whole community.
Thank you, sir.
And unfortunately, the whole community can't be here.
Really appreciate that. Anyone else who hasn't spoken or hasn't filled the form? Okay, then I'm going to close this part of the meeting now, and we move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Need a second.
I will second.
So, I call the motion for the approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, the motion passes. So, the next one is proclamation. This is the proclamation for the National Police Week, whereas the Congress and President of the United States are designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week, whereas the members of the Milton Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Milton, whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of the police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation, whereas the Milton Police Department has grown to be modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Gurdebrak, call upon all citizens of Milton and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May thirteenth through May nineteenth, 2018, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to the communities, and doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Milton to observe May fifteenth, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. This proclamation was adopted at regular meetings of the Milton Common Council on May fifteenth, 2018. So, need a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. So, the next item on the agenda is the agreements, that the land lease reassignment...
Could we move to the ordinance's first reading?
Okay. Okay, so the ordinance's first reading. Final action may be taken upon approval of motion to suspend rules under section 1.07, Milton General ordinances. This is the rezoning ordinance, request for rezoning from Office District B1 to Plan Development District, general implementation plan, the Addison-Ostringer Development, 6814, 6818, 624 University Avenue.
I would move approval of the ordinance, but not to suspend the rules.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, so the motion dies. So, is there another motion? Is there another motion? Okay, so, what do you do, Lee?
Well, I, I'd make a motion to decline the rezoning from B1 to Plan Development District.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, I, I'd just like to say, I've been reading a lot of this, and the neighbors, when they bought their property with the understanding that this was zone B1, they understood that three stories was what was appropriate. And I believe when you purchase the property, it's zone B1, and that's what you, you know, you anticipated in a Plan Development District, but you must had a second, a Plan B if that wasn't approved. And I think that the neighbors deserve to, they have invested a lot into their homes and community, and I, I just think that they, that should be respected in their discourse. It should be in accordance to what they accept.
Okay, any other question or comments?
Call.
Okay, so, Laurie, could we have a roll call vote, please?
I am for the motion to deny the change from B1 to GPP.
Yes. Deny.
Aye.
No.
Sure?
No.
Deal?
No.
You have a question?
No.
So, four...
Three to four.
Three to four, so what goes next, then?
Motion is second for the original motion, and this motion was denied. I suggest we move on.
Move on.
Okay, so, we move on to the next item.
Folks in the audience, could you summarize what that means?
The agenda item called for approval of an ordinance to rezone the Addison-Ostringer project from B1 Office to Plan Development District. That motion failed for lack of a second, so that aspect is, is, is gone. The competing motion, which was simply to deny the rezoning, which you might think would be the opposite of motion to approve the ordinance, but isn't technically, was, was also rejected by the council by a vote of three to four. We do not have a definitive vote for anything at this point in time, so I think this is in, in limbo. The council has no time obligation on a rezoning to take action within, within any particular time period, so this, in essence, goes into suspended animation, unless it is brought up.
Then Larry, also, is there a chance that this could be put back on the agenda through a motion of the council?
Yes.
And how would that hap, or could that happen?
At a subsequent meeting, I think, just in the normal course, when actions of the council are brought forward. Because it was, because the motion reject was denied, we are, we are somewhere in between approval and rejection by the council. So, I would assume that it could, it could be on the agenda again, following the normal course, for scheduling items on the agenda.
And just to remind everybody, the normal course typically is that we have a recommendation from a committee. You do have the recommendation of the Plan Commission, but with that recommendation, the council has made a lack of decision on this. Typically, when one council member or the mayor asks that an item is put on the agenda, I put it on the agenda at a subsequent meeting. So, if, if, if I hear from somebody, that's what I would do. That's why I thought we ought to have that discussion, because for the folks in the audience who think that this is dead, it has that potential if the council member wants to put it back on the agenda at a future date, unless the council says, don't put it back on the agenda.
Susan, and then...
I guess I'm just asking for clarification, because I remember when the grocery store was proposed in Middleton Hills, it came to council, I think, at least three times before it was finally approved. And I was under the impression the developer asked to have that put back on the agenda.
Well, if, I, I don't think that's necessary, but, you know, if, if any alder for any reason, including a request by a developer for something to happen, if a council, if an alder wants to put it on the agenda, they put it on the agenda.
The developer though asked, that's what I'm asking?
Not directly.
Not directly.
Joanna?
So I was, I think what you're seeing is that we want to hear about some changes from the neighbors, but we don't want to kill the development. And I think we're in, in a space where some compromise has to happen. So I think the Plan Commission was not the body that could make the compromise, because they, they even told us at the Plan Commission, they don't look at financials. So I would recommend that you work with city staff, Mike and others that are on the development team, to look at that, because you're, it's not going to pass if we, if it's at the current design. And I think the neighbors are not going to accept it, and we have to have some compromise to go forward. I wasn't voting to kill it, because I believe in the development, but it also needs some compromise. So it has to go forward, and you've seen the votes, so you see that it's precarious. So that causes some reason to compromise. And so we have to either, the development's not going to go forward, or it's going to go forward with some compromise. And I think that, that's what has to happen.
Yes, Susan.
Yeah, I think following up on what Joanna said, there's several issues in terms of compromise, but I think also, me as a council, planning staff, and even the developer, there's some explanations that need to be made more clear. One that I kept hearing was workforce housing, that it didn't sound like workforce housing. This is only going to have part of it as workforce housing, but we need to, as a council, do a better job to explain the workforce housing needs in the city and how it's actually carried out, how the rent is reduced for certain families, not that it's the rent rate that's being quoted. Those are, we haven't gotten that information out as a city or even the developer doing it. I think we've all failed at that. There's also a few things, one of is the concern of parking on Franklin. I think it's just simply that the developer needs to include parking as part of the rent, so that people are encouraged to park under the building. We need to look into, I mean, I look at this as a big picture thing, where infill development is saving our outer rural areas, and we have got one of the richest farm areas immediately north of here. We don't need to be expanding that way, and we clearly need to express or inform everyone of what the housing needs are in this area. They are tremendous, we're, it is very difficult to find houses, and because nothing is available, it's causing the cost to go higher, or the actual rents for them. The developer, I have talked to other architects in terms of, could it be made shorter? The answers was no, if it wants to be financially feasible, and this is an architect not associated with the developer. So that's going to be a tough one for them. Let's see what else there is. And one of the things, we're talking about traffic on Franklin, and this might be something where the police can help us, but there are other ways to prevent, or at least slow down the traffic. What I'm hearing, it's more speed. We already have a speed issue with high school kids driving to the high school. Where I grew up, I lived one block over from the main street in the town, and it was ten or twelve blocks with no stop signs or anything. So it was a nice way to get off of Main Street and avoid stoplights. We got together as a group and asked the city to put in a four-way stop sign, where there had been a two-way stop sign. Put the stop sign in and the traffic went away. It was a simple expla, way to do it. So we need to think about some of those ways too. And I guess one of the other things is, I go around the city looking at, because height's a big thing, and I do serve on a neighborhood architectural review committee, where we look, and I've had to learn all these different regulations. Three stories means three stories up from the first floor, and we have R one zoning here that's thirty-five feet, and this building is forty-one feet. We need to look at it in terms of the actual feet, maybe not stories. Because three stories could vary from thirty-five feet to fifty-five or something like that. So I think we need to clearly define it in terms of height. But I've also been looking at these gorgeous old houses here that are two stories with a very peaked attic roof, and then the storm watching area on top. Those are way above forty feet and don't meet the current R one guiding, guidelines. So I think we do need to do a lot of looking at it, let the developer look into possibilities, and we'll see what happens.
One thing I heard at the neighborhood meeting is that they wanted to see the north elevation, including the homes that are on Franklin, so we can see, these are what the homes are, and this is how this would tower over them, and I wanted to see that, and I'd like to see it also.
No, it's not a public part of the meeting now, so, okay, anyone else?
I think I want to just say that when I was on the Workforce Housing Committee, the people that came in with the workforce housing numbers, the percentage of that apartment set, they reduced those rents by usually two to three hundred dollars. So when you hear eleven hundred, it's actually closer to eight hundred. That's still significant, as compared to when I was in my twenties. I rented for twelve years. I can say that I would have had a hard time getting a down payment for a house at eight hundred dollars a month. But I don't think that that's the fault of the developer, I think that's, that's something that's going on the countywide. We are struggling to get housing for our workers, and that's something I have to think about. I, and I, to the people who are concerned that we don't understand, I can tell you there is a four-story building near my backyard, the senior, the senior apartments are, I think it's four and a half, so probably because of that. In winter, yeah, I can see a little bit. There's also some businesses between, and someone did build out a house that's probably close to four stories, just two houses over from me. So, and that's in the time I've lived there. So I understand what you're saying, but we have to do that in balance with the needs of workforce housing in Dane County and move together forward.
Yes, Mike?
Having staffed the Workforce Housing Committee now for about fourteen years, I feel I should say something on behalf of that committee, like Emily did, just to supplement what you said, or compliment what you said, Emily, because what we continue to hear from developers is that they can't build single-family homes for less than three hundred thousand dollars. That just terrifies me, that we can't have homes under three hundred thousand dollars affordable for people to purchase. And so what we have instead is the ability to go up vertically with multifamily housing, which can be more affordable to some folks. It's, if, if people are concerned about the affordability to families, that's even harder to get an affordable two or three-bedroom unit and to get the costs within that. We've had numerous discussions about this at the Workforce Housing Meeting, and I just think, to put that in perspective, when people criticize this as workforce housing, you have to look at the, what is available on the market now. And when you can't buy a house for less than three hundred thousand dollars in Middleton, that is not a good thing.
Anyone else? Okay, we move on to agreements, that's item number one, and this is the land lease reassignment hangar lot number seven, from Stephen Reed to Susan Schwab and Jeffrey Gatner.
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Okay, so the motion is to prove this reassignment of the hangar, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So item number two is the land lease reassignment of hangar lot number fifteen, from James Halleck to Compass Bravo Lane LLC.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Otherwise, the motion is to prove the reassignment of the hangar lot number fifteen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. So the next one is simple view agreement for customer relationship management web-based software for the tourism.
Move approval is recommended by finance, I think is subject to city attorney approval.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion of approving the simple view agreement say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So the next one is license agreement with Joseph D. and Britta M. Heck for proposed fence at four 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 two Misty Valley Drive.
Second.
Any question or discussion? All those in favor of approving this proposed fence agreement say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. The next one is similar, but another neighbor, license agreement with Brian and Leah Mendel Hall for proposed fence at four 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 Misty Valley Drive.
Move approval is recommended by public works.
Second.
Okay, any question, comments? All those in favor of this motion to prove this proposed fence say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. So the next one is amendment number two, two agreement with Fearbiker Associates for the Park Street-Gamon Road Reconstruction Project Construction Services.
Move approval is recommended by finance.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Any comments? All those in favor of this motion to prove the agreement, amendment number two agreement with Fearbiker Associates say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Agreement with Strand Associates for engineering services, this is item number seven, for the University Avenue Reconstruction Project.
Move approval is recommended by finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this agreement with Strand Associates say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Ward of bid code professional services, ward of bid to wall paving for the Park Street-Gamon Road Reconstruction Project.
Move approval is recommended by public works and finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the bid to wall paving say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Ward of bid to general communications for a police digital radio conversion project.
Move approval is recommended by finance, subject to city attorney approval.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Do you want to say anything, Chief?
No.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Licenses, outdoor seating area, sidewalk cafe, grape water, seven four six six Hubbard Avenue.
Move approval. Second. Recommended by LNO.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Review of, the review and possible acceptance or recommendation of Ellen Oak made regarding possible revocation of Class B fermented malt, malt beverages, and Class B intoxicating liquor licensed held by Star UWM LLC, Fitzgerald's.
I would, I would move that we accept the findings of LNO and revoke the liquor license for Star UWM LLC if they cannot become open operating for business by June fifteenth.
Second.
Okay, any question or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. So the next one is a big item here. Miscellaneous approval of twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three Conservancy Lands Plan.
Move approval.
Matt, this year, well, okay, you want to make, okay, Matt, you want to say something?
Stacy Marion and Mike Healy are here from Adaptive Restoration. They've got some brief slides to go through to kind of highlight the planning effort. This was a comprehensive effort with a great deal of public input, led by Mark Wagner from the Public Land Staff, and I'm going to turn it over to Stacy and Mike for brief overview.
Okay. Stacy and Mike?
All right. Just some background, our company Adaptive Restoration has been working with the city for over a decade, helping them manage their conservancy lands. You might have seen us out, either doing concrete management, prescribed fire, we've interacted with the Conservancy Lands Committee several times. I would say this, this plan probably had some of the most public input compared to previous Conservancy Lands Plan. We did a survey, had several public meetings, and a lot of that was incorporated into the final product here. Show hands, how many of you read the two hundred and fifty-seven pages?
All right.
All stars. So Stacy's distilled it down to just a few slides, she'll be sharing those with the people once she gets connected here. But then we can take any questions, so thank you.
There you go. You got it.
Mike, when you're trying to get that to work, how many acres did you burn this year?
How many acres? As a company, we burned about twelve hundred, about fifty-sixty burn units.
How many acres in Middleton?
Not as many as previous years, because your city crew's been doing that, so maybe forty. Big chunk of that was the North Fork of Pheasant Branch, that was a little over twenty-five acres.
I just ran past that, it's nice.
Great job.
It's great. Well, thank you for being here. I thought everybody was here for this.
We can bring them back.
First, just wanted to say thanks to Mark and Matt foremost, as well as members of the Conservancy Lands Committee and many others here, who did provide assistance and input into the plan. As Mike mentioned, this plan is the culmination of several months of information gathering, research, and synthesis, and it does document the last seven years of Conservancy Lands management, which, as it turns out, takes a lot, as Mike mentioned, with appendices and all of the culminated data that we collected, it was over two hundred pages. I'll try to move along quickly, because I know there's a lot on the agenda. As part of the plan and as part of inventorying the current state of Conservancy Lands, we did update the Conservancy Lands Facilities Map. This was actually done by Ben Yar at Resolution Studio, and he isn't able to be here, he's a new parent right now.
Oh.
I think the, part of the plan that we are most proud of, and I think I'd say the same for Mark and Matt, was the public input process for this plan. We hosted a dedicated public meeting, as well as multiple smaller meetings with Conservancy Lands supporting friends groups, that would be the Friends of Kettle Ponds and the Friends of Pheasant Branch. You might recognize some of the people in the photo here, including Mr. Mayor. And so for today, I just want to keep it really quick with three main takeaways, and these three really do come almost directly from the public input that we received from this plan process. The first one would be that Conserv- The first one would be that Conservancy Lands really define Middleton as a community. The second would be that its residents support the ongoing restoration and enhancement of those areas. And the third would be that that restoration is possible through collaborations both within the city but also with the city and its external partners. So first, Conservancy Lands and public lands in general really make Middleton what it is. We heard a lot that people commute through the public lands trails, they see wildlife on a daily basis, their kids go to schools that are adjacent to Conservancy areas, and they might exercise, spend time in nature. So the Conservancy Lands are certainly a part of day-to-day life in Middleton, even if you're just driving through on a road. And just to note, all of these quotes are ones that we had gathered through the input process. I guess you guys can't.
We can see.
Oh, okay. I think the impact on daily life is evidenced by the visitation rates to the conservancies. So this is some data from our survey, but just to brief highlight, over sixty percent of residents, I should say that we got over four hundred and nineteen responses on the survey, which was very great, and it actually was enough that our results are statistically significant. So for Middleton residents, over sixty percent had visited the Pheasant Branch Conservancy and the Creek Quarter over ten times in the last year. And over ten times is actually our highest category, so we didn't even like get near to capturing how often people actually use these areas. But from some of the comments that we received, you know, people would tell us, I walk around the Conservancy every day, I walk around Tideman Pond every day. So we do know that it's a major part of people's quality of life here. I think it's also.
Just a sparring.
I think it's also important to note that the Conservancy Lands and public lands in general make Middleton competitive as a community, both in the county and statewide. And I included this picture of volunteers from Spectrum Brands. They've been volunteering in the conservancies for the last several years through Clean Lakes Alliance, and all the times that I've volunteered with them in the Creek Quarter, they've always voiced their appreciation that they can work in an office that's so close to a Creek Quarter. So it's not just necessarily people that live here, but also people who work here. So I kind of touched on this, but I think the two elements of Conservancy Lands that really were highlighted with the public input, one was that closeness or that proximity. So people told me that they feel like the conservancies are there. So people who live near or down the block from Sturker Pond kind of associate that as their area, and same with the other conservancies. And that is true also in the center of town or in the more business district where people who are working here also have access. And the second component would be the naturalness of the conservancies. You know, I was kind of surprised, maybe I'm an ecology nerd myself, but there were so many comments appreciating the native vegetation, the wildlife, and really harping on the appreciation for being able to spend time in nature, especially in kind of an increasingly urban setting, as evidenced by the prior discussion. And the last part was that overwhelmingly residents were really supportive of continuing this work. So not only were people appreciative of what Middleton has done, but they want to see that continued. They want to manage invasive species, they want to provide habitat for our endemic wildlife. I also found that the comments had a sense of pride or almost legacy in what Middleton's Conservancy System has done in the past. And some people who have lived here for a long time noted the improvements in Conservancy Lands over the years, and really voiced their opinion that they want that to be maintained. I thought, just for a second, to take a step back, it's also important kind of to think about the legacy of this area. So just today, I was looking on the map and figured out that Middleton is about five miles from the Curtis Prairie, which is the world's oldest restored prairie. So this area in itself is kind of special because this type of work and protection of natural areas has been going on for so long. And a lot of the comments, I think, maybe didn't explicitly state that, but supported that idea of like continuing Middleton as being a leader in restoration, not necessarily this is something that could happen. And to wrap it up, somebody actually said this at a meeting, and I'd like to go, with the proper collaboration, we can make Middleton a better place. And with that, I'll open it to questions.
Yes, Susan.
Mike and Stacy, I've been on Conservancy Lands for longer than I've been on council, and I've seen some of these previous comprehensive plans. This one is just truly outstanding. I think one of the biggest things was getting the citizen input, which has been great. And I did mention, I'll put my plug in, it's not just whether you're in the Conservancy, but whether you're simply going by it. I mean, I drive by the Middleton Hills Wetlands every day, several times a day, looking for the birds that are there. I've seen bald eagles, there's great herons, in addition to the Canada geese and many varieties of ducks. But just enjoying it, driving by and seeing everything is, I think, a lot of our citizens enjoy it just for that reason. The other thing is, I don't think we in Middleton realize that Wisconsin initially was an oak savanna primarily, and there's less than, I think, about one percent. I might be, that might be high. You guys know the data more.
Twenty oh one percent.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. We have native oak savannas that are mature. We should be very proud of getting those restored, continuing to restore some of those areas. So you guys have done a fantastic job.
And I agree with Susan. You know, there were, when there was a tour with Friends of Kettle Pond, lots of people there, so, great job. Anyone else? Thank you, Stacy.
My fault.
And Mike. Yeah, yeah, we will, so, yes.
I just would like to add another compliment, but also compliment the city council. Everybody will be gathering here in a few months. It's called budget time.
Yeah.
Okay? I just, Mark, where are you going?
He turned up.
High, high terminal. It's, it's the time of the year when we start talking about what can we do for a less than a dollar. We need to do a dollar's worth, but we don't have a dollar to do it. So when it comes around budget time again this fall, just remember the nice joyful time we've had in the last ten or fifteen minutes of this great project, which we have, which, which we have completed and has, they've done an excellent job. And it comes around time at budget time, remember, remember this, because this is part of the legacy that makes Middleton so good. And you can't sometimes put a dollar on some of this, okay? Very, very difficult to do that, but remember, budget time's coming up.
And speaking of budget, the boardwalk and the walkway down from Ga, or Gammon and Park, that neighborhood, was completed today, so it's, it looks great, just looks great.
And let's give Matt a big hand on that.
And more.
Matt and Mark, yeah. Yeah, it does look good, so. Thank you, guys. Okay, need a motion to prove?
I think we already had one.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Otherwise, the motion is to approve CLC fiber plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. So the next one is planning and zoning, and that is the.
We've already done that.
Oh, okay, so that's already gone. Okay.
No, no, high site.
Haven't done high site yet.
No, we didn't do the planning and zoning, right?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. So planning and zoning, this is the specific implementation of plan. It's a partial for high-site enterprises, office building at three two five two Pleasant View Road.
Move approval.
Second.
Any, okay, so any questions? Any, okay. The motion is to prove the specific implementation plan for high-site enterprises, partial SIP. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Resolution, the resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-five supporting applications for urban non-point source stormwater management application grants.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-six granting, granting permanent limped liability easement over airport property to Silver Creek Aviation LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Any question?
We have a, we have a, an airport occupant who's asking for high-speed internet, and it asks, we have to have a resolution to solve that problem, so.
Okay.
Just stringing wire along airport road.
Yeah.
Well, the key to this is the fact that this, this form of easement is, is intentionally and consciously modeled on a Bureau of Aeronautics model, and the utility easement conditions that are part of it are key, because obviously there are only limited circumstances when the state will allow us to permanently encumber airport lands. So what we've done is followed their format precisely.
Okay, any other questions or clarifications? Otherwise, the motion is to prove this permanent limped liability, permanent easement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. The next motion is the resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven authorizing the issuance and sale of three point five million general obligation promissory notes.
Move approval is recommended by finance.
Second.
Any question? Do you want to say anything, Mark, or that's?
We're at the right place at the right time.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So the next one is the resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight approving sewer utility twenty seventeen compliance maintenance annual report.
Move approval is recommended by public works. Second.
And by the way, they got a A grade and hundred percent score in a lot of those metrics, so they're really great job. Okay, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Now we are on to the committee appointments, and I'm going to make a small statements here. So we had a process which we followed for the committee appointments in the past, and this year what I did is that I opened the committee to the whole city, so people could apply for various positions, and they were all considered. So, and I personally went through all the application to make sure that they did meet the, they were qualified to serve under our provision of chapter two. And so, two weeks ago, it was six weeks, which I spent talking to the people, and this time, now it's already eight weeks, I had conversations with nearly all the applicants. And so I have chosen the best qualified nominees based on their qualification and experience for each position. And as I mentioned in the past, I did give the consideration to the selection that would result in greater gender equity. I know the change is hard. This is a different process than what has been followed in the past, and, but you know, that's, I have worked hard to provide opportunities to qualified new applicants, to serve their city, to give the chance to all citizens, young and old, rich and poor, men and women, and with all levels of education and experience to serve their city by serving on these committees. Middleton citizens have an amazing level of talent. We are very fortunate. Each of those districts have so many people who want to serve, and this is a great problem to have. So I know I may have made mistakes. If I hurt anybody's feeling, I'm very sorry. I did not mean to hurt anyone's feeling, and it is just a different process than it has been followed in the past. And each committee has a term limit, and each committee has a certain length of term to which they are nominated. At the end of that term, they can be the renominated or somebody else can be selected. So this is the process which I have followed here, so. So, but I did not mean to hurt anybody's feeling, and I have tried to be as honest, as fair, as humanly as possible. So then, and I will be happy to work with all of you because I want it to be successful. I want to, I know, I may not have been perfect in everything which I did, but working together, we can make it perfect, so. So now we have various committees here, so we are going to confirm each committee one by one. So I need a motion to confirm the mayor's recommendation for the appointment to the Commission on Aging.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Otherwise, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so motion passes five to two. So the next is the confirmation of mayor's recommendation for citizens' appointment to the Arts Committee. Need a motion to prove?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So two, two opposed, aye two. Next one is the confirmation of the citizens' appointment to the Board of Review.
Move approval.
I'll second that.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, one, okay, so, six to one. Next one is a confirmation of the mayor's recommended citizens' appointment to the Community Development Authority. There's only one change, so.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, one opposition, so. Confirmation of the mayor's recommendation to the citizens' appointment to the Conservancy Lands Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? All those in favor of the.
Yeah, well, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. Slow down, Gurdip. Looking at the appointment that you made for Conservancy Lands Committee, replacing someone from twenty sixteen with somebody from twenty eighteen, a two-year difference, you're replacing a Janet, you're replacing, I'm sorry, Ken Markort with Janet Kane, is that correctly?
Yep, that's true.
Could you just tell me why you chose that particular replacement? I, to give you a little background, I took a look at all of the applications.
Sure.
People that were submitted, and both were recommended by you and also were not recommended by you. And there are some recommenda, there are some people who are quite well-qualified. Could you just tell me your thinking on that particular person?
Well, in this case, this person is well-qualified. It would have been, for example, she was the co-chair of the Restoration Committee for two years for the Friends of Pheasant Branch. She has been on school board, she has been involved with the restoration work in New Jersey, and, and she is, as far as education has come, she's well-qualified to serve on this one. She has been a Milton School Board for eight years, and I have talked to some other people as well, and they, she's very highly recommended, so.
On, on, on appointment to Conservancy Lands Committee, which is a lot different than than the school board, what qualifications do you see this particular person having, um, on the, uh, C, on the C L C that they didn't have on the school board?
Well, she has been on the restoration project for, heading the restoration project for the Frazzen Branch Conservancy.
She's headed, headed what?
She has been a co-chair of the, one of the projects which, uh, the Friends of Frazzen Branch Conservancy, they have various projects, so they have a education and then there's a, there's a conservation part of it and she has been a co-chair of it.
I thought she was doing restoration.
So she's doing restoration.
Yep, yep.
Deb Weitzel does the education.
Yep, yep. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of this, uh, motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, five to. Um, confirmation of the mayor, mayor's recommendation to the Landmark Commission.
I'll move approval.
I will second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. The confirmation of the.
I gesticulate no for all of you.
Confirmation of the mayor's recommended citizens' appointment to the Parks, Recreation and Forest Commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any questions or concerns?
Mayor, you just spoke about gender diversity and how you endeavored to make sure that all of our committees were diverse in terms of gender and age. And yet, um, you chose not to appoint a second female to this committee. I'd just like to get your thoughts.
And for which, I'm sorry, I tried to look very hard and, uh, I, I know what, I went through this, uh, very, it was very hard, but, uh, these were, I just have to look at the qualification of each one of them and, uh, this is, uh, this is what I found were the best qualified and I know this and it wasn't something easy. I have struggled on this for a while. And that's a good point. I appreciate your pointing it out.
The second thing that I had was, in terms of age diversity.
Mm-hmm.
One of the challenges for this committee has been, um, trying to get, um, younger parents with children.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me which of your appointments meets that?
Uh, they say that Dan, um, what's his, uh, let me look at this, uh.
Which one?
Yeah, they say, let me look at the names, so, just a second. Okay, I'm sorry. So, um, Park Recreation, okay, so Nick Adams, he's, uh, he has, uh, young kids and, uh, he was actually even working with you to get with the Orchard Ridge, uh, well, Orchard Heights or whatever that, parks built there as well. So he worked with, well, I guess, I don't know, it was you or elder person from that area, maybe it was with, uh, with Dan. So that's, uh, he's probably in his, uh, well, could, well, I don't know, not, could be in thirties, but could be in, um, yeah, he's young. And he actually does certain, you know, take care of the children. And he has a lot of ideas as well, if you want me to go through all these things which I, he came up with, so.
Can I ask if you had additional female applicants in that age group or was there a lack of applicants or just a lack of qualified applicants?
I had to look at my files so I could answer it, but.
Can you consider on, uh, trying to do that for next year to meet your interests in having more gender diversity on parks for next year?
I absolutely would. Yeah, it is, uh, it was gut-wrenching. It wasn't easy, but, uh, that's, uh, what we have. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, uh, four to thirty. Thirty.
Three.
Three.
Okay, so the next one is, uh, the confirmation of, uh, mayor's recommendation appointment to pedestrian, bicycle and transit committee.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So, one opposed.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Okay.
Three.
No.
Four.
Two.
Sorry.
Five.
I thought that one over here was, it was Howard, sorry.
Okay, so the. Maybe we want to skip the Plan Commission and then come back to it later.
Oh, that's what that is.
Yeah, let's skip nine and then we go to eleven.
We're skipping.
That's the confirmation of, uh, the citizens' appointment to the Police Commission.
What, what'd you just do?
He's asking us to temporarily skip over number nine and number ten.
We'll come to it, so.
Okay.
Confirmation of mayor's recommend, um, citizens' appointment to the Police Commission. There's a one lady I have pointed to it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the next one is the confirmation of the citizens' appointment to Public Safety Committee. There are two women appointed in this one.
I recommend.
Second.
Any questions? Any comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, one in opposition. I should let you know, this is the first time that, uh, well, there was a one person, one woman had served on the Police Commission before, as Chief can let you know, but on the Public Safety Committee, from what I could tell, there were no females other than the elder person. And, uh, I don't know that maybe ever, so. So the confirmation of, uh, mayor's, uh, citizen appointment to the Sustainability Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor of the appointment say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, six to one. Confirmation of the mayor's, uh, recommended citizen appointment to the Tourism Commission.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So the motion passes.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Six to one. Confirmation of, uh, mayor's recommended citizen appointment to the Water Sources Commission. There's just only one person, one young female appointed to it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second it.
Other questions?
What's clock twenty seventeen mean? Oh. They were given awards for their length of service. Oh, okay. I thought maybe this is, they're on the clock or not. Thanks.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, six to one. The confirmation of the mayor's recommended citizen's appointment to the Workforce Housing Committee. There's the replacement for Emily and the couple of other replacements, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty, four, thirty. Okay, so the next one is, uh.
It's, is it three, three?
It was four, three.
Four, three.
Oh, okay.
Confirmation of mayor's recommended citizen appointment to the Youth Commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty, four, thirty. Okay, the next one is, uh, confirmation of the mayor's recommended citizen appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Move approval. Second.
Now, this is the, any questions or comments? This is the first time there will be a woman on this commission from all what I can tell. So. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Two?
Two.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we going back to nine, ten?
Are we going back to nine and ten or?
Yep, yeah, go back to nine and ten, so. Okay, so the nine is the confirmation of the mayor's recommendation to the citizen appointment to the Plan Commission. Need a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, any questions or concerns?
Gurdieb?
Yes.
Yeah, I've got concerns in terms of not necessarily the quality of the candidates you're putting, have recommended to put on, but I'm very concerned about taking off a, specifically Cindy Zalors. She is the only member on the Plan Commission right now that is a citizen whose professional job is not in planning, transportation, workforce housing and so on. And I think she represents a very positive, strong component that we need. As we heard tonight, we had lots of citizens here concerned about, uh, what council and Plan Commission has been doing. Cindy's the one person that truly represents the citizens. The other big important thing is she has been on the Plan Commission for a long time and I know you want to get new people on, but with taking her off, you have reduced the number of people that have served any length of time down to one person. I think that's a real mistake. Cindy provides a long-term, that institutional memory that is important and it's important for it not to be just staff's institutional memory. And she looks at things in terms of the general citizenry. Not to criticize, and I know Kurt is here, but these, uh, the professionals in planning, they're looking at it from what they've been trained. And I think it's really important to have it looked at also as a part of the committee to have a citizen looking at it. So I would, I'm really opposed to having her taken off the commission.
So, um, I went, I know the, I, I want to, you know, Cindy is a phenomenal person. She has served on this mission for twenty-five years and she has done a great service on that Plan Commission. I worked with her over a year and, uh, I have a great respect and regard for her. And, uh, but then there are people, especially for Plan Commission, there are at least ten people, all well-qualified and, uh, wanting to serve as well. So, so I mean, let's say, you know, you have a, this is a very difficult situation and, uh, you know, you have to make a decision there that, uh, are you going to provide an opportunity to new people? Are you going to have, uh, you know, and these new people, um, you can ask Aline, they are A I C P, they are, um, American Institute of Certified Planners, certified, and they have to, new, as Kurt can tell you, that, uh, that certification every two years by doing some sort of training for thirty-two hours or certain over thirty hours. So it's, uh, so the candidates which are there, they are, you know, top-notch. There isn't, uh, but I do see that, uh, you know, there has somebody who has served for twenty-five years and, uh, they carry a lot of knowledge and we have Aline Kelly who has been, of course, she's a staff member, she has been, uh, on the Plan Commission even a lot longer. And, uh, and then as you mentioned as well, as Lee Hubbard, he's a citizen and also comes with a lot of experience. And then as far as the citizens are concerned, I don't really have that much of experience. I'm not a planning certified, I'm there because I'm a mayor. And then the Dan Ramsey is another, you know, he's not a certified planner or any of other things, he's also a citizen. And so, so, so we do have a regular citizens on the commission as well, as well as the others who are well-qualified.
You don't have the institutional memory when you take.
Yes, Howard.
This is a, this is a classic example of, um, taking an opportunity to, or having, having someone be replaced on a commission that's been around for a long time and of the commissions and committees that are in the city, the Plan Commission rises to the top very easily as far as the depth and breadth of knowledge and responsibility that they have for planning our city. And when you take someone that has a wealth of institutional knowledge and replace them with someone who has a lot less than that, even though they may have an academic qualification of this and that and everything else, you're losing a lot of the perspective that's necessary in planning because a lot of the issues that come before the Plan Commission are issues that have, um, background, uh, response, background, uh, influences that are, go back three, four, five years, here's what happened there and here's what we did here. These are all things that go into making a decision. And, uh, safe to say that when you take someone off like that, it, um, it can throw a big monkey wrench into the planning process. So I too would, uh, not support that change.
I agree with you. I wish you would support because I know the change is hard.
You wish I would have spoke when?
Yeah, support, I, not the sport. I mean, support the nomination of.
Oh, wish I would support.
My nomination, so.
Oh.
So, so I think, uh, you know, I agree with you, that's why the staff comes, the staff has a, you know, uh, they do all the background work and.
We have an excellent staff. We're not, we're not debating the, we're not debating the staff.
Absolutely.
We're not debating the staff, Gurdieb.
Yes.
Talking about.
Absolutely.
Particular individual which a number of the council people feel is probably inappropriately taken off. That's what we're debating.
Absolutely, and, uh, I also want to give you an example. Kurt may have been on the commission, Plan Commission, not as long, but he has lived in the community here and he has worked not only just, uh, in Milton, he's working on other community as well. He brings, uh, you know, a lot of perspective as well, so.
Again, we're talking about a particular individual. You don't need to give me the biography of everybody else on the list. I can see it. I can see all the ones that you did not put on by looking at your rejected list. And there were some people with some pretty good qualifications there. Okay? Academic qualifications. Experienced qualifications? Eh.
They were not rejected. They, I couldn't just, I could put only two people there. I could give you the example that why they were not, and we aren't going to go into detailed, some of them actually had plenty of experience, so, actually, in, in planning, so. So it is, uh, it was not an easy decision. I mean, I admired and respected as, uh, you know, Cindy, so it just, uh, you know, at some stage, uh, you know, one has to make a change, so.
I'm going to call a question. And the question is for support or, uh, non-support for your recommendation.
So there are two nominees, aren't there not?
Yep, yep.
So are we handling these individually or collectively?
We're voting yes or no on what the mayor has proposed.
That's my question. They're making two proposals.
No, it's one vote.
One proposal.
For both, okay. Just want to make sure we understand.
Okay.
May they accept the mayor's recommendation or reject it simply?
Okay. All those in, uh, favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes four, thirty. So we are on to item number ten, that is the confirmation of the mayor's recommendation for the citizen appointment to the Pleasant We golf course committee.
I'll make a motion to reject the nominees.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
So I, I just want to say a couple things. Hopefully everyone here was present when Brad Viget talked about, um, the ratings that the city got.
the ratings that the city got. One of the issues that continues to be brought up is the finances of the golf course. It's especially critical for the city to maintain that continuity on the golf course committee because we are the way, aware of the history. We are aware of how to run the golf course, and it's, that experience is invaluable. The two nominees, or I'm sorry, the two incumbents have collectively closed, I think, 30 years of experience on this committee. One of the nominees has over 10 years, let this sink in. One of the nominees, I'm sorry, one of the incumbents has 10 years of managing a golf course operation. So let that sink in, that the mayor believes that someone with 10 years of golf course operation is not more qualified than one of these nominees. So I just think that we, we really need to keep the continuity here. This is a team that essentially has a common vision for golf. The plans that we have put into place are working, and there is just absolutely no need to change what's happening there.
So I, I just want to-
Yes, speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, one of the things, tonight when we heard at finance from Brad Viget, that I've supported the concept that Terry Turner shouldn't be removed from this committee because of his long experience and his really good leadership on the golf committee since it was established. But hearing Brad Viget talk about the effect, the negative effect of the golf course finances on our bond rating and so on, made me-
Passed.
Passed, passed. And knowing that the work that has been done by Terry, who is a CPA, so he understands the finances of both the city and the golf course. We need to keep a person with those skills on the golf course committee so we can continue to make progress and eliminate those few negative statements about our city overall finances. So this again is a person that has contributed a significant amount. I'm not convinced new people coming on would provide any more expertise or even ideas. So I strongly feel like he should stay on. I've also talked to Jeff Dunn about this, who's one of the other incumbents. Jeff has told me that he feels so strongly about Terry staying on, he would be willing to come off as a compromise.
And I just want to say I've talked to Susan, that I will be willing to accommodate one person, and I will find ways to, you know, get him on the committee if you approve my nomination, so. Yes, Kathy?
Jeremy, how many years of experience does he have on a golf course?
Not that many.
More than 10?
Well, he's, he's got five with us, but he came from Arizona where he ran golf courses.
That's who I would look to for a lot of that. And as far as the financials, I think you have experience with that. I've heard a lot of really good things about Kelsey, a lot of really good things.
So I can tell you a little bit about the nominees which I have. So this, okay, there's a Todd Sloan, so he's one of the, he does the managing of Epic Center. Just to make sure that I knew his work, and I went to Epic Center, and many of you have probably gone there as well. And so he doesn't really, you know, I, I mean, he has a tremendous amount of background, and Bill can even jump in there. Bill worked with Todd Sloan, for example. And he comes with the excellent credentials here. And the other thing is he, both of these nominees, they grew up on the golf course. It is not they were managing the golf course. They grew up on a golf course. At the age of seven, both of them, it's set up interesting, they, both of them started playing golf, and they are still playing golf. So, so, so it is not that I have pointed somebody who is really lightweight. So they may not have managed the Pleasant View Golf Course, but they have, they have the, the experience, and they, they are the golf players, and they understand golf as well. So it is not that, so, so as I said, if you want to compromise and approve these, and I will try to find, you know, to accommodate Terry, I will be happy to do it. But otherwise, you know, I guess, um-
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I've played tennis since I was seven, but that doesn't make me qualified to run the U.S. Open, okay? So I think you have to, just because someone's played golf doesn't not make them qualified to, to, to be on the golf committee. I think you have to understand.
Terry's played since he was five.
Right.
This is an advisory committee marked as-
It's an advisory committee, but you're, you're trying to make these equivocations, right? You have two well-established, experienced incumbents, and you're trying to replace them with people that aren't, that don't have that experience and don't have that depth of knowledge, right? And it's, and this is, for the golf committee, this is one of the only committees in the city that has a P and L impact on the city finances, right? This is, the golf committee is charged, is tasked with bringing a return back to the city. It's not another government, it's not a government-type operation. It is, it is a for-profit operation, okay? And we, the, the committee deserves the best qualified people. And I strongly believe that the best qualified people are already there.
So do we have a professional staff managing the golf course?
Can I make this alternate motion?
Yes.
I would recommend that we approve Terry Turner as a member of the golf committee, and the mayor can choose the other member in place of Jeff Dunn.
Except you can't make that motion because it's the mayor's appointee.
That's right.
Okay.
I'd like to state that I received numerous emails from my constituents, and they asked me to approve the mayor's appointments. So for them, I'm making that statement.
So, okay, so-
The motion was to reject. That's what's on the tape.
The motion is to reject the nominations. Do I just call the question?
The nominations for the golf, right?
For the golf committee. So if you vote yes, that means-
Reject.
You are, you are rejecting it, and if you vote no, that means you accept the nomination.
No, it just means no, yes.
Yes.
Salimbo.
Okay.
Still needed affirmative.
Yes. Later on, okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, so let's go with the roll call vote.
Okay, so I make sure that, what's the wording?
To reject the mayor's appointments to the-
Yeah, the mayor's appointments for the golf.
Okay. This is the motion to reject the appointments for the Pleasant View Golf Course Advisory Committee. Burke?
No.
Olson?
No.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kuhn?
No.
Richard?
No.
Teal?
Yes.
And West?
Yes.
So the motion fails. So now we need a motion to approve the nomination.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's suggestion.
Need a second.
I will second.
Okay, any-
And by approving the mayor's-
The heads, the ones that he wants to appoint, his appointments.
These two nominations which I have made.
He would, I make a motion to approve his nominations for these citizens to the golf committee.
Okay, all those in favor of this motion to approve say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion posted four to three. Okay, need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Need a second.
Go get the clocks out and pat everybody on the back on the way out the door.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.